You want an official countdown?
Original construction.
Official countdown.
That's one of the unique things about it.
It's got 50 years on it.
The St. Louis, according to what I understand, it'd never be built today.
Is that thing, is it for you still? It's for it. Make sure you do it correctly.
St. Louis Arch, I think so. You can still go up.
What time do you say?
I see about 30 seconds or something like that. Somebody's talking about all the EPA and OSHA requirements. They'd never get it built today.
Is that built yet?
Sir?
The riverbank.
Baltho's retiring in two weeks.
Yeah, I think I started it. They tore down a whole bunch of buildings along the riverfront.
Thirty minutes. Thirty minutes. Yes.
There's a lot of old beer troughs out that way. They had it on TV tonight that we were going to vote on this. Yeah. I don't know, I've still got a minute. There you go. Bob?
Thank you. You say ready?
Yeah.
Call this June 4, 2012 meeting in order and ask you all to stand and recite with us our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call roll please, Steve.
Crisilius?
Present.
Cromwell?
Here.
Feltzine?
Here.
Schramke?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Chairman Manchester?
Here. We have the minutes meeting.
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for May 21, 2012 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting is prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Almost unanimous, that's good.
Every to give.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Cromwell?
Aye.
Feltzine?
Aye.
Schramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Do you have a motion?
A move that we take from the table, the resolution entitled the resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the addition of the Renaissance Area Master Plan as an element of the comprehensive plan and recommend same to the City Commission.
Second.
Second. So, Tyler and Shadle. First, we're going to take it from the table. It was actually tabled to a date certain, but we're going to have to vote on the motion first. Take from the table. Call roll, Steve.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Cromwell?
Aye.
Feltzine?
Aye.
Schramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Thank you all for being with us again tonight. We did have our brains scrambled a little bit and directed a little bit and instructed a little bit and most of all, some revelations to us that we hadn't considered at our work session. This was all done in this public forum on TV. We did table this motion a month ago for this meeting and that also included our public hearing. And before we have any comments, I'd just like to remind you, if you've spoken before, give somebody else a chance before you speak again, you'll have the opportunity. It's the reason we have public meetings, public hearings. When you come to the podium, please give us your name and then what comments you are, questions you might have to direct to us or anybody else. So with that in mind, I'll ask you all to come up and speak to us if you'd like to for something really important to you. Now's the time. Who wants to break the ice? Do you? Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Veezy. I am president of West Kentucky Community and Technical College and I wanted to address, I read the report and I thought I would, it would be timely if I addressed the Paducah School of Art in relationship to this plan. So if I might, I have handouts. I wanted to address the location of our proposal or our plan, talk about the commitment that the college has, that West Kentucky Community and Technical College has with the Paducah School of Art for the future and to talk a little bit about the commonalities that I saw with the plan regarding art and talk about those and point those out if I might. On that very first page, you see a schematic design review for the Paducah School of Art. This was done by Ross Tarrant, an architectural firm out of Lexington. They also have offices in other regions of Kentucky. But the college retained the services of Ross Tarrant Architectural Firm to look with us as we designed the future for the Paducah School of Art. We had a common plan that we have presented before, but I wanted to give a few specifics. And on that second page, you will see Madison Hall. And Madison Hall was purchased by the college last fall. And we do plan extensive renovation for that area. We have presented that to the city before and talked about what we would do in that facility. But what our plans are, is it's to move the ceramics program from downtown, the Paducah School of Art in the downtown location to Madison Hall and have extensive renovations for ceramics that would involve outdoor kilns. Now, I don't want to not mention the success of the Paducah School of Art. We started in the fall of 2008 with about 175 students and that includes introduction to art as well as our other classes. We now have over 400 enrolled, approximately 450 students taking introduction to art all the way up through our studio classes. And I know that in this plan, it talked about the Paducah School of Art as a catalyst for arts in the region and in this community. And I believe that that is true. We are going to make an extensive commitment to Lower Town, for this community, for downtown Paducah, and that's what I'm really here to emphasize tonight. So we will make extensive renovations in Madison Hall. Madison Hall is scheduled to open as a ceramic studio in January 2013. Now, when you see this schematic design, it's pink and it has lots of changes to it in terms of the exterior. It doesn't mean that it will be pink, but it's just, you know, saying that the building will change to give more of a flavor of an arts district. The second schematic drawing that you will see will be the building, we will be tearing down those exterior garages for Madison Hall. And you all know that Madison Hall is at Ninth and Madison. We know that it looks great, Madison Hall from the exterior, it looks like we wouldn't have to do much renovation, but we really will because of those outdoor kilns and the ventilation for ceramics. But this building will be the addition of a sculpture studio. Now, ceramics and sculpture will have to take an entirely new form for the Paducah School of Art to be truly an accredited art school that we would want it to be, offering an associate and fine arts degree. So this will be a nice addition to that community or to the Lower Town area and to our entire region. And the investment in that property alone, in that one section, will be approximately $4 million. So that's a great addition. The next slide that you're seeing is the pickle factory. And that is a little bit longer term plan to move 2D design to that area. And you might be asking, you know, we have that property that the city bought and gave to us and that is really scheduled for Phase Three. But the reason that we have chosen to move in this direction and to have these smaller buildings, it's really to look at what we can do, what is really feasible for us in terms of money and something that we as a college can do as a Kentucky Community and Technical College system and as a community. And large renovation projects, we feel it would be better to keep the momentum going and to make that investment in this college, this Paducah School of Art, to keep it going and invest smaller but more rapidly rather than wait for the ideal. And the ideal really would be to move in that kitchens property and have one big overarching building. But it's to us more important as a community that we keep it going and stabilize and do our part as a college interacting with the community to make this a total success. As a part of this program, we also intend to have, and that was in the plan, visiting artists, having those workshops that would bring more people into our community. And I do want to point out that the commonalities that I saw, not only the college and that commitment that we are making to the community, the investment that we're going to make as a community in this arts program, but the entryways into the arts district. I saw that on Ross Tarrant, our comments were that we needed to have a more visible entryway into the arts district off Martin Luther King Drive. When you come in from other sections into this arts district, we needed to be more visible. The Paducah School of Art will not be probably pink and it won't be lime green and that second sculpture, where the sculpture building was. But we do intend for it to have a significant impact in terms of the way it looks and it look like an art school. They also recommended that we do sculpture along the corridor there on Ninth Street and if we could do something on the entryway where kitchens is now located with a signage, but something that's vibrant and speaks to an art community. So I am here tonight to share with you our plans. The location in that area was a little different than what I discussed when I talked with the consultants that did the plan for the city. But the comments and the location of sort of an extension between downtown and Lower Town in that binding corridor was more difficult to be able to do in a shorter period of time. And quite frankly, I felt that that was more important for us right now to keep this going, to keep the vibrancy and the movement going for this art school and for our community. So I'm here to show support from the college to the community and to answer any questions that you might have about the Paducah School of Art and its part in this whole plan.
Any questions?
Dr. Veezy, I do have a question. You've studied the plan, you've presented what the college is going to do in the future. Do you feel that the two blend well together? I think I heard that from you, I just want to make sure.
Well, when you're talking about the art, and that's what I think I can address as a professional, what I read in the plan was that the community, that the college and the arts program was very important to the future of Paducah and this whole plan, that it many times acted as the catalyst and the driving force for the arts community in any district. We do intend to play that role in terms of being a very active participant with very good, solid academic programming. And that's what I think this community needs, is the solid academic programming. The location might be different than what was originally envisioned, but I think that an investment of several million dollars in that Lower Town area can do nothing but help our overall community grow. The, some of the commonalities, again, you know, when I drive down Martin Luther King and I want to turn into that district that will be the Paducah School of Arts and Lower Town, I want it to have a different look. So I think that's what this plan is saying. So from my perspective, we should look at this and draw those conclusions about art, the river, history, and certainly our, we also have on that corner, that little white house that is a historic preservation program laboratory. So we're very committed and I think that that was visible in this plan that we should be and we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone?
Thank you very much then for the opportunity.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a question of Steve in regard to this.
Let's get through, the other people want to talk on the public. Steve's had plenty of time with us. Anyone else? Yes, sir, come up. Hey, Nick, how are you?
Nick Warren, 1935 Jefferson. Again, spoke last time, just want to reiterate the three weaknesses in the plan and the strength. The three weaknesses are the parking structure needs to be moved west, at least to the Third, Fourth Street corridor. The binding does not integrate the three components, downtown, Lower Town, and the riverfront. We don't need additional retail planned in the master plan until we fill the existing retail space in downtown. And the good part of the plan was the miles and miles of art. Thank you.
Somebody have a question, Nick, before he gets away from us. Anybody have a question? I do, Nick, you discussed the parking downtown. I think you gave us a figure the last time you were here. Parking spaces available?
Well, I was chairman in 1989, 1991 with the new Main Street. I was chairman of the Design Committee and one of our challenges at that time when Andy Wood was chairman is to, we had a three-day charrette with a national parking consultant that we had arranged, that Main Street had paid for to come in and work with us. And we, and this is, these are old figures, 20 years old. But there was about, and this was taken in from, I think, he wanted from Madison to Washington, from Ninth to First Street, just that whole comprehensive. And we, and I don't remember the figures, but there's about 3,100 total parking spaces in that area, including surface parking and lots and street parking. I think probably since that time, there's a little bit more parking lots because some buildings have been removed and turned into parking. I know that People's Bank did that section between the Paducah Beauty School and the back of their building. But in 1988, when Mayor Montgomery came into office, she had a wonderful plan and that was to look, and she was looking at grants through the public transportation, PATS. She was wanting to put PATS office in a new facility. It was right behind it by the fire station at that time. It's on the first floor of the municipal lot, is to put part of that as the PATS operating offices and then three stories of parking on land that the city already needed, owned, no acquisition cost. It's between the Third and Fourth Street quarters. You can get in and you can get out on major thoroughfares. She had an idea of perhaps at that time when citizens and peoples were staffed much higher than they are now, of perhaps to sell some of the spots there on certain levels with card entries and so forth to those institutions. So she had a plan to deal with the debt. So, but that is a great, when we worked on some projects with citizens, when they acquired all of that parking between Third and Fourth on Jefferson, they even looked at long-term possibilities of putting parking structure there. The good part about those sites is you can get in from Third and Fourth. So you don't have any side streets that you got to wander through and so forth, and those are high-volume carriers. And there's already a single property owner to deal with. So plus, where the city visions has it, if you draw the five-minute walking circle that they're talking about, half of the distance is to tow boats and the river. So if you move it up west, you get down to First Street, but you get further over even into the border of Lower Town. So, I answer your question, too much.
I don't recall, but I was thinking that you might mention this when you said PATS, it rang the bell. When this about the same time, they wanted to move stops off of Broadway over to.
Yeah, that was all part of it and this was part of that same time when the parking meters came off. There was designated parking, Main Street, we went through and worked with each property owner to see if they wanted a two-hour limit or if they needed some, some were more turnovers. There was a small laundering cleaners next to St. Francis, they wanted a 20-minute there, the shoe shop wanted 20. So there was a concerted effort over about three months to find out what the needs were. Then that was, and the meters were taken out of the parking lot over here. And then there was to be time marking and we had a rotating, non-sworn officer of the police department that were writing tickets. Our office is at Corner Fourth and Broadway. Lot of the merchants at that time, we said, listen, if you get a ticket, bring it to us, we'll pay it. You know, I mean, don't go pay the ticket, but don't worry about over-parking if you get a ticket. And most of the merchants were going to, you know, take the ticket cost. It worked real well for a while. But of course, things contracted after the mall really got going and there's not as many businesses. But anyway, the bottom line, parking structures need to be further west, in my opinion.
You have any questions for Nick? Thank you for that. Anybody else would like to make any comments about this recommendation to the City Commission? Yes, sir, come up.
Hi, I'm Richard Glasscock, 326 North Seventh. I agree in a lot of things with Mr. Warren in that the parking structure seems wrong to me. I live on Seventh Street, my sump pump works all the time. I can just imagine a underground parking structure next to the river. I don't think Paducah needs another indoor swimming pool. I love the miles and miles of art. I think that should be emphasized and worked with. We need to keep people excited as they come off the interstate. Bring them down here with anticipation, not with, gee, how far down is this place? How far do we have to go? And I was here last week for the environmental assessment of the riverfront development. And one of their plans, off in the future, is a park and marina situated next to the Executive Inn. Oh gee, there isn't one of those anymore, is there? But it wasn't a completely bad idea. The development of a park, a place for families to come down and enjoy the river where the wall isn't in the way, would be a great thing to have happen. I'm new to Paducah. It's my understanding, that's what used to be there, was a park for families. I'd like to see that happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glasscock. Anyone else? No other questions or anybody want to make any statements? Don't feel intimidated, although sometimes I know people feel that way when they get up in public. Yes, sir? No, come on up. I'm sorry, we can't hear you back there. At least I can't.
I spoke last time to Bob Hopper, I live at 24th and Harrison. But I'm very interested in the downtown riverfront. Born on the riverfront, Riverside Hospital, which some of you remember. So I go back there a long way and the plan, don't want to come off as naysaying because we are excited about the riverfront, the whole of downtown and Lower Town. They're not enemies, they work together, they're all part of the picture. And if we have a vibrant riverfront, it will help a vibrant Broadway strip. But the heart of our downtown, Broadway, needs some immediate focus and push, whatever it takes. Other cities are able to do it that have the physical structure we have of our downtown and for us to just continue to languish with, you know, a store opens and two closes, two open and three. We got to have some major focus on that heart of downtown and I didn't see that as part of the plan. There was some touching on it, like connections from certain corners into Lower Town. But as part of any master plan that's adopted, I would like to see a real focus on Broadway out to Ninth, at least out to Ninth. And on the parking, nothing kills a downtown more than surface parking lots. If we do more parking, yes, it needs to be a structure, but I agree, not downtown, we're that sort of public square feeling downright on the river. Don't make that your parking structure or your new retail. There is a surface parking lot, it may be the same property that Nick was talking about, I don't know, on Kentucky Avenue, that seldom used. If you're going to build a parking structure, maybe on an area that is underutilized now, closer to the heart of downtown, but don't make it just an ugly boxing, a boxy parking structure. Other amenities could be in there, public offices, whatever. Not new retail, we got plenty of retail space on Broadway. But, you know, think creatively, put all the elements together, don't cheat one to favor another. All of the sections of downtown have to work together and they have to work at the same time and they can't fight each other. That's my say.
Wait a minute, please. Might be some questions.
In other words, move on all fronts at the same time. Other communities can do it that have less going for them than Paducah.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Mary Hammond with the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau. You know, I'm a team player. I want us all to be on the same page and move forward. There are so many parts of this that I do agree with. I do ask you all, as you look at this, to consider that first block of Broadway, our staging area for activities, ask to look from the riverfront into our community as we do have a marina plans and development of the riverfront. into our community, as we do have a marina plans and development of the riverfront, and looking into town and is a parking structure really what you want to see when you come into our community and put millions of dollars into a riverfront. I ask you to consider our attractions. They are very forward-thinking. We've got three of them with talking to consultants, making plans. They're not sure where they will be or how these plans are going to move into the future. But we don't want to landlock anybody. We want to make sure that we have growth that happens in our downtown. We've got good bookends in our community. Everything's coming together. All of our pieces of pie are almost there. Let's keep working together. But we definitely need to keep that, the big view, keep our corridors. And I disagree with 9th Street. It has to go out farther. I'd ask you to get on a city bus with us as we do a tour and come down Broadway.
Oh, I don't do-
We gotta go out a little bit farther than that. And the same with all of our corridors coming in. And I'm on the beautification board, and we try to keep an eye out, but there are so many things out of all of our control. But there, our corridors do need work, and the signage, and being able to see that you're coming into something that's exciting. Paducah has always been an easy sell. And gosh, it's been around a long time. I've been to almost every activity we've had downtown, and I don't think I've ever parked more than two blocks away. And it's never taken me more than 10 minutes to get home. So it's, you know, I don't see parking as our largest obstacle. But I do see that we have a valuable asset in that first block of Broadway. And it is used, and it's beautiful, it's admired. We have a beautiful town, and we can go nowhere but up with what we have. And let's just all get together on this.
Yes, sir, John.
My name's John Campbell. I think that we can't look at the plan, I mean, we can nitpick each and every piece of it, and I think it's, that's been done sufficiently. But one thing that hasn't been done, and it just has to be, I mean, we can nod and say we don't like these parts of the plan, but really, the plan is just a bad plan. Truthfully, it is. It is rife at the outset. Misspellings with bad grammar, and they didn't do this for free. This is not, you know, the students that we bring in from SIU. These are people we paid a lot of money to produce a professional document, and it's weak. If it was done in business, somebody's head would be on the chopping block. Because it's done perhaps for government, it's just, okay, we'll just slide this one through. But it's a poor piece of work. The other thing that bothers me about it is, from an accuracy point of view, we go back to the parking. That's been mentioned, where the parking structure should be, if the parking structure should exist. Actually, the one that's proposed on the 100 block of Broadway is only there to sustain the project that is planned there. Otherwise, it's not needed, because as they said, we have plenty of parking. However, when you look at their map that shows the parking, again, this is just simply inaccurate. They show 27 lots that they identify as public parking. Among those, just for your consideration, happens to be the parking lot behind, the parking lot on the 3rd Street side of the post office. I know everyone feels comfortable parking there. But one of their dots for public parking is there. And I don't think the post office would be real happy if we use that as public parking all day long. I think probably why they have the fence around it. Another one, interestingly, unless I just got lost in all the dots, is at the corner of 5th and Washington, you know, across from the kind of Zen Garden at the library, right across the street from that, they have a dot there. And it used to be a parking lot when it was Brooks Bus Line, but for some years now, there's been a printing press there with a nice glass wall. I don't know if many of you know the pastor at St. Francis de Sales, but I can assure you, he doesn't consider his parking lot as public. Anyway, we all know that. They should have known that. Again, they're the ones that are getting paid for this. So I just want to suggest to you that when you look at it, look at it from perhaps a little different perspective. Are we really getting our money's worth? And if we're not, why wasn't they ever there on their part, even to spell things right? That's it. Thanks.
Just a minute, sir. I have some questions. Maybe I don't want to ask you. If they do, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, before we close this public hearing, do y'all have any questions that you might want to ask?
What we're doing is either a positive or negative recommendation to the City Commission. Is that correct?
That's correct, as it is now. Yes.
Well, the way I think the actual motion is written is that the Planning Commission actually adopts the plan and then recommends same to the City Commission for their actions. That's the way that the motion is set forth right now.
In other words, see, yeah, I got another my question, too, I think. Go ahead.
What if we do not want the whole plan? I mean, there's sections in it that I just cannot go along with. And, you know, I don't want to vote no for the whole thing, because I think basically it has some very good points, but it has some that I'm just totally opposed to.
Is the conference of plan is, you know, under the Planning Commission? If you wanted to alter the motion, to amend it, to accept a portion of it, or the entire thing minus one part, that would be your all's option? Is that correct, Dan?
So therefore, I could make a motion that certain part of this be eliminated or be not considered? Or what's the phraseology am I looking for?
As the motion is presently under consideration, it says, "If this resolution will be treated as a final report respecting the matters appearing herein." And if you don't agree with that, then we would have to amend the motion to submit what we think is not a perfect plan, but portions of the plan, if not all of it, with deletion of whatever we feel needs to be made before we recommend it to the City Commission. Is that correct, Dan? Send the affirmative. Thank you. So, is there any questions you want to ask Mr. Doolittle or Mr. Irvin? Okay, and then I'm going to close this public hearing. I know you all have to hear me because I happen to be chairman right now, but I'm not ready to vote on something this magnitude without making some changes, some changes.
I would make a motion that we table the motion for further discussion.
A second?
Second with Mr. Shadle. Motion made, Ms. Cilless. Discussion on the motion.
Is this a date certain or a continual, or just continually generally? Because if it's, if you put it to a date certain, we don't have to re-advertise. If we continue it generally, then we have to advertise in a newspaper.
Would we have to advertise purely for the public hearing? And haven't we closed the public hearing?
We've closed the public hearing, but I think we would still-
Have to re-advertise?
Have to re-advertise.
I think everybody should have an opportunity to speak on it if we make changes to it before we vote on it. So let's make this, let's down the line.
I think that's a good idea.
For us to consider it and changes we'd like to make to it. Y'all comfortable with that?
In order to do that, won't we have to have another workshop or something? Because if we wait to have a date certain, you're gonna vote on it again. And so we need, and one of the reasons we're talking about this is to discuss it. So we need to have some time in order to which to discuss again. And actually, I guess, come up and fabricate a motion that we want to have. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, I think that, you know, there are, as I say, there are certain things that I think should be changed. I'm sure we all feel certain things should be changed, amended, tweaked. I don't care what the word might be. So what about another workshop and come to some sort of consensus of the different items that we think should be changed, rather than continuing to do this change one at a time?
I think if we, right. If we come, have a workshop, we need to come prepared, each of us, with what we would like to see changed in the plan. And that way, we can adequately compare notes of plan to other.
Give everybody their own acts. All right. May I make this suggestion to you, Kathy, so you can make it part of your motion?
Sure.
We have scheduled meetings as far as I know on the 18th and about July the 2nd.
Would we have a meeting on July the 2nd?
Meeting I'm sure we'll have will be the 16th of July.
I think we'll have one on July 2nd also.
We're talking about a date certain. Three weeks, five weeks.
Steve, do we have our name? Are we here on the 2nd?
Yeah, I'm sitting over here. Make it the 18th of July?
Yes.
Thank you.
July 18th.
What's the date now?
July the 18th, which is the third meeting for now.
16th.
July the 16th.
Monday.
16th, that's correct.
16th and then 18th of Monday.
That's the meeting we're scheduling.
To vote.
To vote.
We'll still talk about a workshop.
Yeah. Did you hear all that, about the workshop?
On the 18th?
No, the workshop before them in two weeks.
Have to be on the 6th, excuse me, 18th of June or the 2nd of July for a workshop.
I'm out of town July 2nd. I won't be here.
Let's have a workshop. And I don't want to delay this any further than we have. Let's do it on the 18th then.
June 18th for the workshop and then July 16th for the vote.
How do you, Mr. Manchester, how do you want to go about this process? Would it be appropriate to collect everyone's comments and from the board and bring those together and try to have something cobbled together?
I think we should express it as quickly as possible at a workshop. I know that gives us two weeks, but I'm sure everybody would like to have some idea of where we're going on this.
Right.
And I think that's-
We'll be out of town June 18th.
Two weeks.
No, sure, certainly giving my thoughts.
Sir.
Is it possible for us to get email addresses?
We don't want to get your emails. No, sir, our instructors, which we have to receive, you know, we have to go to classes once every so often. It's set by statute, like most boards are now set by. And we cannot, should not communicate between ourselves and the public concerning specific items. Like if you want to change the zoning on your property, if you own property, we should not discuss with you that fact. And if we do, when we come to our meeting, we have to disqualify ourselves by having other knowledge than everybody else does. It's a simple ethical thing to do. But by law, if we want something to get set aside, only one of us has to tell somebody else, and they tell somebody else, and then we have a conflict. And you can't vote on conflicts. We have a big one now, but we're discussing it in public.
So for us to provide more input, we need to get a workshop?
Provide it to Steve Irvin, who is person in charge of it. And then he'll do that with Mr. Doolittle, if he wants to, and to us. And we do receive things that way, but it, we're cut out of it. It's a direct communication. And knowledge is knowledge. If you have knowledge, then better for everybody. Nick?
Mr. Chairman, if the public had input, would it be appropriate to contact Steve for them and give them-
I would certainly send copies up into Mr. Doolittle if you're gonna, if you want it.
I'm just saying, establishing some conversation from the public, would it be appropriate to ask Doolittle through Mr. Irvin?
Well, Mr. Irvin has-
Yes, my question is, he gathered some information, will he go back to consultants?
We've had, we've, I'm not trying to be smart about this, but we've had the public input through tonight on two occasions. I appreciate that. Everybody's becoming more and more aware of the circumstances, situations. We have considered transportation and all the other things that impact us for a long time. Everybody does. I mean, you plan a trip, we plan a trip. You have a lot more knowledge than a lot of people because you've been on a board or commission that has reconsidered those things about when they get here, where are they gonna park? If they work here, where are they gonna park? Now, I have knowledge of it. We talk about it at a workshop. You're welcome to attend. Everybody here is welcome to attend. The public is welcome to attend because we like to have participation. Not that we're gonna consider any more facts, but we're going to see what facts we agree on. We're kind of like a jury. No, I don't want to make that comparison. But we are in a way. And what we recommend to the judge is like recommended to the City Commission, and then they'll tweak it the way they want to tweak it, if they do. But this has taken a lot of effort to get this far. We're in the process of making consideration of our total comprehensive plan because we're required to do that by law over five years. This is the seventh year. But we've considered it every year. And we've made changes to it every year. I take that back. We might have missed a year. But there constantly, we have actually a lot of paperwork concerning our comprehensive plan, which this recommendation or ramp will be a part of that statutory law we hand to one generation to the other and to our City Commission. So, comments if you have any or questions? Sometimes y'all think we're rude. I know Nick wanted to hand me something the other night, and I told him, not now, don't do it. And that's what I'm getting at. We can't embrace either side. We have to make an impartial judgment, seven people, to do this. And we can't do it with people calling us on the phone or writing about us in the newspaper, reporting it on TV or whatever. We have to make our own judgment about that.
But what we can do is invite people to come and talk.
Sure. And that's what this is all about, to be open and above board and let everybody have at least the perception that they're part of what's going on. And perception, a lot of times, becomes reality. But until it's proposed, it's not gonna be. This happens to be an important issue. And that's how we approach it, I hope. Did that answer your question, Nick? Good, I'm glad I did.
If I may, Chairman, as far as if anybody wanted to submit information to forward on to the Planning Commission, they could certainly submit that to my office. And I would make sure that packet is put together and given to every Planning Commission for you to consider at the public hearing, which is the next meeting. Probably if somebody wanted to discuss the Renaissancearian Master Plan in depth, Steve, would that be probably contacting Steve Doolittle? But certainly, if you have information, please forward it to me.
Steve and I will pretty much share everything. Well, we will share everything that comes to our respective offices.
Thank you very much.
And I guess right now, we had a-
We have a motion on the floor, don't we?
Yeah, we have. We have a motion to table this to a date certain. We have a motion to table this to a date certain.
July 16th.
July the 16th, 2009, and have a workshop on June 18th.
And that was seconded by Shadle.
That's 2012.
It's a little far out for me.
Did Crisillas?
Call roll, please. This is to table, the date certain.
Crisillas?
Aye.
Cromwell?
Aye.
Elton?
Aye.
Schramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Motion to table to July the 16th, 2012 is approved. Thank you all very much for attending. I assume now everybody's gotten that report that you sent to us again. The comprehensive plan changes you...
It is. That was the only thing on the agenda.
Language.
On the goals and objectives? I think we actually adopted that, but what I'm going to be doing is bringing it back to you again with some additional changes. So I plan on probably doing that in two or three weeks.
They're already in, that's in the additional...
Do that!
There may be some additional ones sent out, but I'll send you a new packet.